Good evening and welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for tonight, which is June 24th, 2024. Thank you for coming. Our first order of business is to review and sign bills. We have a bill for $644.60 to the community advocate for June 24th, 2024 legal notices. Could I have a motion to approve and pay that bill?
Motion to approve the bill.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Moving on to item number two, which is to review and approve the minutes. We could do these collectively if we all agree. Do I have a motion to approve minutes for February 28th, 2022, February 27th, 2023, November 27th, 2023, January 29th, 2024, March 25th, 2024, and April 29th, 2024?
Motion to approve the minutes, approve the minutes listed in the agenda?
Before I ask for a second, there is a caution and I apologize. The caveat is that the minutes for April 29th, 2024 indicate that I was present at that meeting and I was not. So with that change indicating that I was not present, perhaps I'll take a new, should I take a new?
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Apologies, first time at this, at this role.
Do A through E.
Okay.
And then we can...
Do I have a motion to approve items A through E?
Motion to approve the minutes A through E in section two of the agenda tonight?
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I wasn't, I wasn't an associate member of the board as of, as of February 28th, 22, or February 27th, 2023.
Thank you. That's a good, good point.
So I...
So I'll withdraw them, shall I? I'll withdraw.
I'll withdraw the motion and will push to continue to the July 17th?
We'll do the July 29th.
July 29th, 2024 meeting.
So, do I have a motion to continue items 2A through F to July 29th, 2024?
Motion to continue the minutes as listed in the agenda to the next meeting, which is July 29th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
I can second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We are going to go a little bit out of order. We're going to take new business first. We have an item to discuss and vote on the administrative approval per condition C dot G for the submission requirements of the decision regarding an updated landscaping and lighting plan for the Point at Hills Farm comprehensive permit at 526 Hartford Turnpike. If I could ask the appellant to please step forward and identify themselves?
Hi, my name is Hugel Togromajin. I'm a project director with Quin's Val.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Regan Andriola, landscape architect with Beals and Thomas on behalf of Quin.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us. We're interested in hearing what you have to say this evening.
Thanks for having us. So as you may know, the Point at Hills Farm is a two-building, three-story project with 93 mixed income units, and it's about halfway through construction now. So this is a fortuitous opportunity to check in and answer any questions and update you on the progress of the project. We also are seeking approval of an insubstantial change to the landscaping plan, which Regan can get into, but which we were asked to bring to you for a vote, even though it is an insubstantial change and could have been dealt with at the inspector level, if you want to describe the change.
Before, hold on just one moment. Do we need to disclose four-member board since we're voting in approval? So you are aware, we do have a four-member board tonight. A one-member vote of no would be an immediate denial instead of a five-member board, which allows more of those no votes. If you're okay with that, we can move forward. Otherwise, we need to continue in the next meeting.
We're okay.
Okay. Thank you. Continue.
Thank you. So again, good evening. Regan Andriola, registered landscape architect and associate with Beals and Thomas on behalf of Quin. We had submitted a landscape plan through the permitting process with this project, and we had noted in the landscape plan that the tree locations were approximate and subject to, you know, slight adjustments based upon, you know, where they would maximize their screening. So last fall, we did do a site visit with representatives from the town, and we were able to identify specific trees along Route 20, some of those large pine trees that we were able to save and preserve, and we did some minor tweaking to the grading to make sure that we could preserve as many trees as possible along Route 20. And so we had those, I had those locations shown on the plan specifically, and what that was able to allow us to do is to shuffle some of the trees around and add more landscaping along Stony Hill Road. So the prior plan in your two-set, the first sheet is the new plan, and if you flip to the second sheet, that was the prior approved plan, and you can see that along Stony Hill Road, we had much fewer trees. So we're able to shift some things around. Quantities and species still remain the same, but we're able to move them in a way that is really, you know, maximizing the screening. And also, you know, as we go to construction, I would be on-site prior to installation of the trees to make, to work with the landscape contractor to make sure that they are even further placed so that they are, you know, providing the greatest screening possible. The, also, the trees all along Stony Hill Road, the majority of them are all evergreen of varying kind of, you know, pine trees that obviously eventually get very tall, but then mixed in with lower eastern red cedar and spruce that are more dense, so kind of varying textures and layering of screening to, again, trying to maximize the screening as much as possible along Stony Hill. So we feel it's a fairly minor adjustment, but wanted to present it to the board. Happy to answer any other questions.
And just to note too, per the condition of the 2016 plan, it couldn't have been just an inspector level. It was a part of one of the conditions that for, you know, administrative review with the board, the landscape plan had to be submitted to the board prior to any changes. So just, so that's for the record, which is why we're here today. So, all good.
Anybody else want to start? Want to start, Tim?
So the, just, just so I'm clear. So the landscaping plan was not approved back in 2016 as part of the project?
It was, but any changes to the plan had to come back to the board for review and administrative approval.
Okay. And what, what prompted the changes from your point of view?
Realizing, you know, during construction that, you know, the view from Stony Hill was much greater than we really wanted, and we had this opportunity to shift some of the plants down there and create, you know, give more landscaping to, specifically, there's an abut right across the street, so we really felt that that needed to be bolstered, that landscaping down there. And because we were able to identify some of those large pines and kind of, and then there's also kind of an undergrowth layer along Route 20 that we were able to preserve. So some of the plants that we had in those locations, we realized now we could, they'd have higher value if we shifted them around onto the Stony Hill side.
Was that prompted from the abut, or is this something you, you came upon on your own?
I, I, I mean, we were always kind of looking at that and realizing it as we were looking at the plan, and I think last fall, there was a bit of a discussion. So I think it was kind of both realizing it at the same time.
Okay.
So...
All right. I don't have any further questions.
It looks like there have been a good number of trees added sort of at the bottom right-hand corner. I don't know if that's a garage that's being, anyway, there's a building. So that, that, that's good news. I'm wondering, what are the relative heights of the trees that are being installed?
So, most of them, you know, the evergreens are usually specified in like by feet, by height, so six to eight feet are most of them, six to eight, I think is all of the evergreens. And then any of the deciduous trees, those are usually measured by caliper, like inches of, of the trunk. So those are two to two and a half, one to one and a half, which is all standard size in the nursery trade. And we chose these heights, this comes up a lot for me, because there's, you know, always a lot of pressure to try and put larger trees in. But sometimes, there's been research shown that the transplant shock of putting in larger trees, because the root balls are bigger, so once you put them in, they're take longer to actually establish, and there's just a higher risk of them not, not surviving, which just means taking longer to replace them. So we found that the six to eight foot, although, you know, obviously, you know, not huge when you're first putting it in, you know, from a ground level at least, you know, it's usually taller than a regular, you know, average person. But they tend to establish quicker once they're in the ground, so they set their roots, and then they actually start to grow faster. So that's kind of the, you know, our approach to choosing sizes. So...
And you said you had to shift some trees around. Are you reducing the number of trees?
Not reducing, no. Same, same quantity. We've just shifted, because there were a few places where kind of, you know, back in these corners where there was kind of additional, you know, plants that we thought, you know, weren't really providing screening value in some of these, you know, some of these other corners, we, you know, snuck a few from here, from there. And then also because we were able to identify those large pines that we're saving along Route 20, so some of the trees that were in there, we were able to kind of shift them around. So...
Okay. Thanks.
I'm assuming those large pines you're talking about are the trees here kind of half-tone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. No, I'm happy to see that there are more trees added across from that abutter's house, I'm sure. They're happy about that. I'm happy about that, especially since there's trees being saved up top, so being moved around is good. So, thank you.
I'm all in favor of Kevin's trees.
Well, we're here. Any other questions about the project or updates? I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to Shrewsbury and applications opening this December. Mixed income, the average rent is around $1,600 for a really high-quality, beautiful situation.
Is this a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then I'm assuming it's a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
So do we take input from the public?
I think it's just a public meeting, but if you want to.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions?
Nope.
Nope?
No.
If there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment or ask any questions? So we're not taking a vote, or we're just voting on a diminutive change? Just vote on a diminutive?
Okay.
Yep, the administrative.
Do we have language for that?
Change. Where's the language? All right, I'll take a stab at it. Er, do you want to?
I'll take a stab at it. Motion to approve the diminutive change for approval per condition CG, I believe that says, of the decision regarding updated landscape and lighting plan for the Point at Hills Farm comprehensive permit at 526 Hartford Turnpike.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we will have a continued hearing to hear the appeal of Bradford Row for a special permit in variance to section six, table one, and section two to construct an in-law apartment in a detached accessory structure at 28 Ridgeland Road in the residence B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 39, Lot 21,000. Anyone who is going to be talking to us, please approach and identify yourselves.
Is there a place to plug in for a presentation?
I don't have... I can send you the link to the meeting, and you can join that, because I don't have anything for you to physically plug in right now.
Okay.
And as we did state for the new business before you, this is a four-member board. If you would like to push the meeting to the next, you're, sorry, your application to the next meeting, you certainly can. Otherwise, we'll continue with the four-member board.
So sorry, are you comfortable with going forward with the four-meeting board?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So you can introduce yourselves and start off, and I will send this to you right now.
Oh, you have my email.
Is it the contact dot?
Do you want to introduce yourself first?
Yeah, I'm Bradford Row. I'm the GC of the project, and I filed the, I'm the GC of the project.
I made more noise.
Yeah. And I was the one that pulled the permit for the, the change or to start this whole process. And I'll be running the project once, if it gets approved.
I'm Jenna Hamel. I'm the owner of 28 Ridgeland Road, the one that is hoping to get approved for the in-law. Did it come through? Or is it sent?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry for the wait. I hope it doesn't count against our project.
I am very electronically challenged. Take all the time you want.
That's very kind of you.
Well, not all the time.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Am I just joining the meet Google? Okay. Yeah, mute, mute. Okay, I am muted. Okay. And then here's our presentation. I am a visual person, so it helps me a little bit just to show you what we are presenting. I did not share. You don't want to see my face. It's worse than when your school project isn't coming up? There we go. Thank you so much for waiting. This is for the in-law suites. We're at 28 Ridgeland Road, right next to Jordan Pond. We just got those beautiful...
Would you please keep your voice up?
Absolutely. We just got those beautiful fishing sections you guys put in. Thank you very much. We love them. The whole area is amazing, and we love living there. This is my family. We live at the property. We're a military Gold Star family, and we moved into our home August of 2022. I'm, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Gold Star families, but that is one of our main hardships, unfortunately. My husband, Massachusetts native, U.S. Navy Senior Chief Petty Officer Brian Michael Hamel, passed away active duty three years before we got a chance to retire, leaving myself, our son Luca, and at that time, our onboard daughter Holland, to figure it out. And we came to Massachusetts. We loved it here. He always, always planned to retire here, even when I thought I wanted to be down south. He said, "You're going to love New England. Everyone does." You guys are very confident in this area, and I like it. And in 2022, after we got through COVID, we found our dream home that was covered in cedar shingles next to a fishing hall, which is exactly what he wanted. This is our neighborhood, Jordan Pond. We have this gorgeous walk to Calvin Coolidge School, which I had no idea how much we were going to love. It's like a little United Nations. I'm so grateful for the diversity in our school system. It's exactly the neighborhood I wanted for myself and my children. We have Napoli's for dinner on Friday nights, and all of our neighbors are fourth generation, so it's definitely a good neighborhood and gives way to the fact that we want to stay there for sure. There's also a lot of grocery store choices now. Thank you. Now, as life has changed, we have a new addition, my partner, Ryan. And as anyone that's been married in this room, they know the key to a successful relationship is having different houses. So that's what we're trying to do with the in-law suite. He would move next door into the 1,400-square-foot barn that is currently unoccupied that we'd be renovating. Some of the other hardships and reasons that we're not moving properties right now is the same reason. Most people are unable to move. Just home prices are higher than they've ever been before. Median price for Shrewsbury, we'll say, if you count a multifamily, 642,500, and that was in the past year and a half. It's gone up, and it continues to go up. So the square footage of us buying another house would add around $300,000 to what we've already put in, the price 512, and that's not something that we can afford right now. There is a housing crisis. I'm sure you've seen all of the headlines. The housing shortage is hurting almost every part of the economy, and everybody wants to live in Shrewsbury because it's the best town to be in. wants to live in Shrewsbury because it's the best town to be in, the best school district. And after two years of being here, I can say it's definitely true. Um, we were doing some research when we figured out we weren't in necessarily an area we could have ADUs. That was a new thing that we had learned, um, about what people are doing or what cities are doing, especially boards like yourself, and trying to find more places to live for people. They call it the missing middle housing. Um, so it's a gentle addition to, uh, extra housing units. We have a unit that already exists, which I'll show you pictures of in a bit, um, and we're just gonna make it, instead of the three-story garage that it is now, make it into a place for someone to live. Um, this is a picture of the property. Um, this is the backside of it. So this is actually the only portion that's gonna be changing, and it faces Jordan Pond, just a row of trees. You can't, uh, we have no budding neighbors where we're doing the changes. When it comes to our one neighbor on this side, the top-left photo, we're actually taking those windows out to give them more privacy. Um, she's 85 and didn't want to come, but she's happy to write a letter if you all need it.
I'm, I'm sorry, it, i- is that, the, is that the barn?
Yeah.
Okay. And it, it, the, the two, it looks as though it's a place to park cars.
It does, yes. Um, the gentleman that I purchased the house from loved cars, uh, and so he created a three-story garage. Um, he also just loves stuff, as you're gonna see in pictures that are coming up. Um, it was packed full, so we've been pulling out things as we go, and we learned that there's a lot more, um, wildlife in Shrewsbury that loves the barn, uh, so we need to shore it up and, and hopefully have a person living there, uh, to keep, uh, the structure of the barn in better shape. So this is, on the left-hand side is the before, um, and then the right hand side is as we've been taking everything out. It's actually 1,400 square feet of livable space that we're hoping to convert it to, and that's why we're asking for a change of use, uh, variance. Here's our setbacks on the right-hand side. Uh, we're well within them already. Obviously, it's a building that has already existed, um, and as I said previously, we're not changing anything from the front because the front is actually a two-garage, or a two-car garage. So everything that's gonna be changing is in the backhand side. So that's our house on the far right, um, and on the left is the existing garage. Um, these are very rough sketches. We didn't want to invest too much until we got to speak to you all, but we do have an architect working on them right now, as well as our general contractor. Um, this is just me trying to give as much information as I could before we put the full investment in. Um, the first floor, we're gonna have two bedrooms and a bathroom. That's where you saw the two garage. Obviously, we're taking out the garage doors, um, and we'll be putting in, uh, windows and doors on both sides, uh, that admit, meets fire codes. That second floor, uh, will be the kitchen, half-bath, living and dining, and then there's a loft, but we're not gonna put anything there. We're just gonna take off that floor. Um, the cool thing about our neighborhood is we realized we're actually surrounded by two families, um, and additional dwelling units already. It's a very diverse neighborhood. Um, I believe, uh, a lot of old Italian families lived there, is what my neighbor told me, and she said the whole family lives there, uh, so they just kept on building, uh, apartments and dwelling units. So we definitely wouldn't stand out. Currently, we stand out because we're one of the few that don't have a multifamily, uh, house on our street. We did a couple neighborhood stats, and I can email this to you if that's helpful as well, uh, just listing all of the multifamilies, and this is only three streets in that neighborhood right behind Napoli's, right around Jordan. Wingate, um, I think we have Plainfield, and then, of course, our street, Ridgeland. Uh, there's multifamilies, there's double families, and those are, um, I think we saw even more when we were walking around, but this is what we could find, uh, that were documented on MLS. So this is our, um, this is our neighborhood that we've been talking about, right in the corner where it says Jordan Pond Walking Trail. That's where our house is. And as you can see where all the yellow is, that's just around our property. Uh, those are all multifamilies or additional dwelling units. So right now, we're one of the few single families in that neighborhood. Um, we saw another benefit on June 6th. Uh, the Massachusetts House of Representatives just, uh, passed the ex, adopting the accessory dwelling units provision bill. I don't believe, uh, Governor Haley has signed it yet, but they're planning on it. It was her bill that she brought. We had 130 a's and 28 nays, um, and I think the climate of Massachusetts in general and the U S is going towards more additional dwelling units for different members of your family because of the housing crisis. Um, so we know that hasn't been adopted yet, but we also know that that's where everything is headed, hopefully, um, so hopefully that will help our case as well. And do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I, the, I, I'm, I'm a little confused. The, the application says you want to take an unused building, um, and of a barn and garage, so what the barn and garage is one building.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
It's not a garage and a barn, it's just a barn garage.
Correct. So I don't know how it was Frankenstein together, uh, to be honest. It's a hundred-year-old house. Um, I know that within the last 20 years, uh, the person that I purchased the house from put in the backside of, or the front side of the garage. So the barn was already existing, um, and then he added a two-car garage on top of it, but it's all one building.
One building.
Mm-hmm. But there is a door and a walkway, and where you see that yellow line, we're actually gonna close it off completely from the garage.
Okay, now, who, who's going to live there?
My boyfriend.
Your boyfriend?
Yeah.
Okay.
Secret to a happy relationship.
And where's the in-law apartment?
That backside of the barn.
And who's gonna live in the in-law apartment?
My, my partner.
Separate building entirely from her house.
Okay. Uh, I'm, I'm still confused. Where's the separate building?
So this is just the garage. Right here on the plot plan. So this is my entire property here.
Gotcha, yeah.
This is the, my house.
Okay.
So this is an unused building that's actually bigger than my house.
Okay. Which is, which is the barn garage? Okay.
Yeah. So this is where my children and I live, and this is where we're closing, uh, to build an in-law for him to move in. Does this make a little more sense?
Yeah, I guess so. Okay.
Any input from staff first?
Um, not right now.
Okay. Um, first, thank you very much. That's a very well-done presentation. Thank you for your family's sacrifice for our nation.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So at this point, I'll just ask the board members if they have any questions.
Okay.
So Jenna, the, the application is for, uh, the variance for the, for modifying the existing structure and the special permit for the in-law, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Except Ryan's not an in-law. He's your boyfriend.
Correct.
Um, so by definition, it can't be an in-law, right?
Uh, I'm not sure if that's true. They didn't have a boyfriend house, uh, option when I was filling out.
Totally understand everything. I'm just confused by the application because, as you pointed out, the accessory dwelling units for your, um, are not allowed, um, yet.
Well, yeah.
Um, a- as of right now, they're not, and the.
And that's why we had to be here today, as I understood.
And, but, but by definition, um, he wouldn't, he doesn't qualify as an in-law, because if, if, if this was approved by the board, we would put the stipulation that it would, it would have to be recorded, that would it only be for him, and then at, at any point in time that he did not continue to occupy the barn garage that's modified by, um, by Bradford, that, that would be null and void. It would end. That would be the stipulation that I would have to, to, to put on this.
Let me, let me ask, when it comes to that, so we have a young family, um, and as our children are going to college, they would be able to stay there instead of paying for dorms nearby or apartments nearby.
Yeah.
We have aging parents. When they are no longer allowed to live there, they would be able to live there. I would eventually allow my boyfriend to move inside the house.
Right, right.
So the point is, is that we want to stay on that property, um, and that's why I want to build the in-law, because I'm planning multiple stages of life in the house.
Totally understand, Jenna. It just looks like it's more leaning toward the two-family, um, scenario versus an, an in-law, but I, I'd be interested in to see what the, what the remainder of the board has to say.
I, I happen to be in agreement with Tim because the definition, as I'm looking at it here, I don't know if you saw the definition, Tim, is that an in-law apartment, a portion of a dwelling providing a separate housekeeping unit to be occupied by no more than three persons related by, related by blood or marriage to the principal resident. That's how it's written in our bylaws.
Okay. May I ask, what about family members that aren't related by blood? Would you allow it if it was a stepmother that was aging?
Um, stepmother, I think, would technically count because that would be by marriage.
Yeah.
Well, we have a new problem because I am unable to remarry, uh, or the benefits of the Gold Star, uh, that are supporting me and my family, including some educational benefits, um, are paused until the marriage ends.
Yeah.
So this is going to be exclusively an in-law apartment?
Mm-hmm.
Would you, i- is that part of your application here today? Did I, did I miss that?
Yes.
That's, that's the special permit part of?
Yeah.
That's the application.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
If there was another terminology that it fit better under.
Like, you, you were saying about two fa- like, if it's a two-family apartment, so if we had started the whole process as saying it was a two-family, we're trying to do a two-family unit instead of an in-law apartment, would that have changed this entire, like, would, is that, I see the stipulation and understand that the definition is, is what it is at the moment. So that's why, is, is there a thing, I was just, in my br- when I first signed up for the, that's what, it, it just made sense to put it as that. I, I just didn't know that there was a way to the, like, if we did change it and come back as a two-family unit, would that be okay?
So the board is constrained to look at the application as it is?
Sure.
Staff or an attorney might be able to advise you in a different way. Um, I do think this doesn't, this proposed, um, appeal, in my opinion, doesn't fit the definition of in-law apartment. Um, we're constrained by what the law says, you know, not, unfortunately, w- we can't go outside of the law. Um, and you've made an application to put in an in-law apartment, so we have to look at the definition of in-law apartment, which specifically says those who are occupying it must be related by blood or marriage.
Does common law exist for any of that when we're talking?
I believe we do not have common law marriage in Massachusetts.
Okay.
It's a standard definition in Massachusetts. You know, it is common to many other municipalities. Yeah. And certainly, yeah, I mean, it.
It is a bit antiquated, the definition of family. We've noted that with staff internally, that, that's something we're looking at to, you know, update. Obviously, that doesn't affect you right now, um, so.
Yeah, especially because it's very extra hairy when it comes to the military law, what you are as a survivor's widow.
Yep.
It's all new laws based off of, like, what you can do and how you move on, um, when you have kids that are being supported, uh, by that. I'm, so if I put my mom in there, it's okay?
Well.
If I put him in there, it's not?
Well, yes and no. I think we also need to look at, like, again, this zoning board looks at Mass General Law with the, you know, the, the requirements for a variance are, you know, that's what they have to look for. Um, so I think, you know, if the board wants to kind of talk about that, I don't know where that criteria stands here.
Could, could I make a suggestion? Perhaps it would be appropriate for it, to you, I, I very much enjoyed your presentation, that you might want to rethink this again, okay, rather than sitting here now deciding off the top of your head who's going to live there, okay? I would have no objection if you wanted to continue this or, and come back at another time when you've kind of thought it out a little bit better, okay?
Um.
It's up to you.
Um, I'm a little, uh, I've definitely thought it through. I, there was no other terminology that we could figure out right now as it stands. The building isn't being used on my property, and I would like for it to be used, but there's no other terminology other than in-law. And so as ADUs across the state of Massachusetts are gonna be pushed into slowly being accepted, um, especially on my street covered in multifamilies and ADUs, I just couldn't figure out why our property wouldn't be one of them.
Probably because a lot of those two families predate the zoning bylaw in Massachusetts and within their prior to '67.
Was it specific to Shrewsbury's laws, though, I believe?
Every state, every town has different zoning bylaws, man.
Okay.
I, I would suggest that you kind of take some time and, and rethink this a little bit more, uh, because I'm not inclined to approve this, in my thoughts.
And just, sorry, is there a way, if we want to reapply as we're trying to do a two-family building that has, instead of saying in-law is completely out, out of there, we are building a two-unit, like, we have, we have two units, um, you know, two units on this one piece of property, does that make more sense and is under, is there a way of doing that?
It needs to be attached.
I, I don't know. I, I don't know if it's up to this board to give you advice as to what to do, sir.
No, no, I just didn't know if that is, uh, you were saying that the in-law is, there's a specific definition, so is there a specific definition for the two-family that's separate from that, or is it, like, is in-law its own thing?
I think what Mr. Byrne is saying is those are the kinds of questions you need to be fleshing out if you were to withdraw, um, your petition today. I'm not sure if it's too late to withdraw. Is it, are we still timely?
I think so. No, I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
And what's hanging me up is, um, I think these are questions better suited for maybe our building inspector instead, because what's hanging me up is all our definitions for one, two, multi, and in-law apartment are all specific to a building.
Sure.
This is technically two buildings.
Okay.
And I know we do have some comments from her, um, our building inspector, um, with that being an issue since it's technically outside of the single-family dwelling.
Sure.
Because most of the time you see these in-law apartments are either adding on to it or taking a second story or something like that. Um, so I think those are questions that we can't answer, but she would certainly be able to help you with.
And, uh, Louise? Yes.
So we've gone back and forth, uh, between the building, you guys are probably exhausted of us just asking these questions already, and so this is kind of where we were guided to go, uh, because we were told two-family has to be connected, um, and how it is viewed by the board. Um, so we want to make sure we were using all the right terminology, uh, when it comes to that. So we, we were told to have this, uh, route when it came to the special variance, that it doesn't count as a two-family if it's not attached. But I have a big giant, uh, building that's not being used and being eaten alive by whoever, so I would love to use it.
Right. I think one of the things that we didn't have, or that the building inspector didn't have the information about, or the supporting information from, is how does a detached living unit remain a single-family use as per our bylaw? And that's something you would have to show to us.
So when you, could we have a, you can't sell it? Uh, the, the special variance ends when the sale happens, right?
So my response back to that, or I, well, I'll speak for myself, is that the information that you've presented to us already doesn't comply with the in-law, um, apartment, uh, definition. the information that you've presented to us already doesn't comply with the in-law, um, apartment, uh, definition.
Okay. Um, I don't really know it's true.
No? Okay, then I guess we'll-
But she does have a point, could we condition it that it can't be sold or leased? I don't know if that's within our purview.
Well, it's usually stated it's a family member, and then it sunsets with the sale. That's a standard.
That's standard verbiage.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jenna, I'm sorry, as, you know, as applied in the application, in what it states, if we vote on it, I'm sorry, it's not something I could be in favor of, just by the definition of being low.
And then, well, to reapply after a denial, I don't, off the top of my head, what that looks like.
I think you're barred from reapplying with the same-
Period of time.
Yes, with the, with the same request.
Right.
Yeah. Mr. Byrne?
I'm sorry.
Uh, we're talking about, um, if they would be barred from reapplying within a certain period of time, with the same request, if we denied it today?
I, I would expect so, so that's why I was suggesting would let them withdraw, I mean-
Right, if you want to do-
Suggest that they withdraw.
Continue or withdraw?
Uh, well, since it's pretty clear that it would be denied, I guess we're withdrawing. I don't really know how to proceed, though, because we've presented the case honestly. So, uh, would that be a conversation with the laws, or Governor Healy, as the ADUs are being pushed through, um, the state of Massachusetts now?
Right, and that's like, that's a separate conversation, if that happens, that happens, and we move forward and figure that out, and I think Shrewsbury is also a little behind the ball with ADUs, that is definitely in our, you know, on the agenda, you know, for a town meeting in the future, it's not right now, you know, and who knows how that would go at annual, or a town meeting at any point, you know, again, I don't know when that would or would not show up sometime. Um, and I don't know what Governor Healy will do as well.
Okay.
So, are you choosing to withdraw at this point?
Yes, we are left with no choice, are we?
You always have a choice, but-
Sure.
Have a cut.
A choice that would not benefit me by, by saying it, sounds like, so, um, I'll just get my mom to move in.
Um, so, at this point, I think we'll take a vote on whether to continue, or it's, just, can we just continue?
Accept the withdrawal.
Okay, we'll accept.
Do you want to vote to accept the withdrawal, if that's what they're doing?
Yeah, okay.
Prose a motion to accept applicant's withdrawal?
Second?
Second.
All, all, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Next up, we have sorry. Oh, Mr. Ricker.
He requested to continue.
Oh, okay, great.
To July twenty-ninth.
Okay. So, the matter of, is this four thirty-one, four thirty-three Boston Turnpike?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote on that? Or we just continue it?
For, no, so three thirty-four Grafton Street-
Oh, Grafton Street, okay.
Is, yes, so, um, if you want to make a motion to continue to July twenty-ninth.
Okay, motion to continue, um, the special permit for three thirty-four Grafton Street.
And two variances.
And two variances, uh, to the July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four meeting?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that will be continued. The next matter is to hear the appeal of John Care of three fifty Main Street, Rutland, Massachusetts, for two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section six, table one, to continue operating an automotive repair and sale business upon property located at four thirty-one to four thirty-three Boston Turnpike in the commercial business zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate Thirty-three, plot seventeen thousand, one seven one zero zero zero. Good evening, could you state your name for the record, please?
Uh, first name John, last name Care.
Welcome. You can tell us what you, what you have to say.
We're in the process of acquiring A-Tech Automotive, um, a current operating establishment, we're just looking to change ownership.
Okay. I think in the Google Drive, there is the previously, um, approved, let me go to it.
Came in front of the select board in June, and was approved there, just pending your approval of continuing the zoning, as currently stated.
Okay, and are there going to be any changes made to the exterior of the building?
Uh, there's going to be some cosmetic, uh, upgrades, if you will, some paint, some new doors, new windows. We're going to remove a vast majority of the signage. I believe I submitted photos of our current location in Worcester to give you an idea of the aesthetic, uh, that our business runs.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do, John, so is this basically because of the change in ownership, where the, the previous permit expires with that sale?
Yeah, I guess any repair shop or dealer's license in the town of Shrewsbury needs to be voted on by the zoning board, uh, whenever there's a change in ownership or management, from my understanding.
Okay. Is this an expansion of your other business, John?
Uh, it is.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
There was also talk in your application about upgrading and doing additional stuff. What is it that you want to upgrade?
Just the aesthetic, uh, look inside and outside of the building. We're not adding on any additional square footage, uh, we just want to take what is currently a rundown, uh, building that was built in the eighties and, and bring it into current times, you know, replace the broken windows, replace the inoperable garage doors, replace the sheet metal on the outside of the building, it's been backed into by fourteen cars and trucks and-
Got you. Where'd you work before you bought this place?
Uh, we own a property on six sixteen West Boylston Street in Worcester.
Six sixteen.
The old Demers Auto Service.
Oh, sure. Okay.
I don't have anything.
So, does anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to say? Shall we, can I get a motion to close a public hearing?
Motion to close a public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make the motion?
Yes. Um, motion to approve the two special permits, uh, to section six, table one, to continue operating an automotive repair business at four thirty-one through four thirty-three Boston Turnpike.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is granted, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so I need to start sending these around. Okay, next up, we have the appeal of Jason St. Pierre, twenty-one Grafton Street, Shrewsbury, Massa- is that one continued?
Yep.
Apologize.
That one, yeah.
Apologies on that.
July seventeenth.
Okay, very good. And so, next we have-
Run to Oak Street?
Oak Street. And is that going to be remote?
Yes, I believe they are online.
Oh, I'm here.
Oh, you're here? Okay, sorry.
Uh, next up is to hear the appeal of Guaranteed Builders and Developers, Inc., fourteen West Street, Douglas, Mass, for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section two, and a special permit for the zoning, Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section seven, table two, to construct a detached garage for an in-law apartment upon property located at one seventy-eight Oak Street in the residence B-one zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate Thirty-three, plot sixty-nine thousand. Good evening, could you tell us your name, please?
Good evening, my name is Mandy Hicks, and I'm representing for the Richies tonight. Um, they are online if there is any questions. Um, we are proposing to construct a detached accessory, um, bottom will be, sorry.
Can I just ask you to pause for one second?
Sorry about that, it was in, so in your notice, it said section seven.
Okay.
Um, but I reviewed it with town council, and because I had the, you know, the notice, it's special permit, and the area, all of the abutters were noticed, um, and the proper, um, description was there, we can proceed. It was just section six was needed instead of section seven, but with town council's approval, we can move forward and proceed with this.
Okay, very good. Are you comfortable with changing that, uh, that notice from section seven to section six?
Yes.
Okay, great.
A clerical error on our end?
Okay.
Nothing the applicant did?
Thanks, go ahead.
Okay, um, so we're, um, proposing to construct, um, the bottom, it's going to be a twenty-eight by twenty-four. The bottom area will be a garage, and the top use will be for a in-law. Um, the use will be for their daughter, um, for the Richies, which is a blood relative. Um, she was determined disabled by the state in twenty-twenty, um, so instead of placing her in a group home detrimental to her growth, they feel more comfortable to keep her on their plot of land, um, just in a detached structure, still giving her some independence. Um, but it will be used for her, and that's what we are requesting today.
So, your relationship to them, Mandy?
I'm the representative, so I, we're their contractor.
Okay. Is this, is this building solely for their daughter?
Yes.
Would anyone else live with her?
Nope.
But it sounds like, but the garage would be for the, the owners of the primary residence?
Um, yes, so there will be a two-car garage under with the in-law above.
Okay, and this house, their, their house currently does not have a garage, is that correct?
Um, to be honest, I am not completely sure. I, there may be a garage under, but I am not positive.
On the left end?
Yeah, there may be a garage under. I did reach out to them, asking, but I have not got a answer back.
Um, this is Ricardo, I'm, I'm on the line here, too. Uh, yes, we currently have a, a two-car garage, um, on the left side of the house, in the basement level.
Under the existing hall, under, under your existing home?
That's correct.
Okay. And what would the use be for, for the additional two, two garage bays?
Just some additional storage.
And the driveway would expand right up to those?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have anything further.
So, I think we're running over the same issue a little bit, as what we did to, uh, applications prior, with this being a separate structure. Though one's existing, one's new, technically, the definition of the bylaws is one structure. Again, I don't know if, because this is new, if that makes it any different to us as a board, but technically, by the bylaws, it doesn't meet the definition.
I believe that, um, under the general laws, because the applicant is disabled, that we need to provide a reasonable accommodation, um, and that zoning generally does not apply in cases of disability. I don't know that there's an opinion yet comparing our bylaw to the state law, but I think that's the general principle. We have seen it in other situations with other disabled individuals. Pretty much, you can't apply zoning to disabled individuals. You can apply the building code, you can apply other state health and safety codes. That's just my, my understanding.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, so.
Yeah, um, you see it in, in cases like sober houses and other, um, uses that require an accommodation.
What, what is the, what has the building inspector said about this?
Uh, Mrs., we, I have spoke with Mrs. Sheehan, um, quite a couple of times, she did, this is what she suggested for us to do, um, to go for the variance. She did put a comment on there, um, as well, about, uh, listing the minutes and the board's discussion. The variance is important for use this, the variance is important for the use of this property, is what, from Patricia Sheehan.
Right, it states, um, the variance is to allow an in-law apartment to be located in a detached structure, per the bylaw. The in-law is part of the single-family dwelling. I don't, and is no longer a separate living unit upon transfer of the property, I think we missed a word there, but, um, so.
Is that standard language, or is that something we need to condition?
That's standard. That it would sunset with the property owner.
Okay.
This-
So, we don't need to condition it on that?
It, it will be conditioned, yes.
Oh, okay.
They're the two standard conditions with in-laws.
Does anyone else, any board member want to ask any other questions, or have any other comments?
You, the, the, the application says you're going to, you're going to excavate, excavate. Excavate, I guess.
Yes.
Dig out, okay? The foundation is presently there, and erect this in-law place on top of it?
Yes.
Okay, and it's twenty-four, twenty-eight by twenty-four feet?
Correct, yes.
Uh, let me just make a correction, there, there is no existing foundation.
Right.
Yes, so we will be excavation, foundation, and then put up the show.
Oh, I see.
So, we will be doing-
I'm sorry, excavate, comma, foundation?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Does anyone from the public wish to comment or question anything? Okay, thank you. Do we need any other discussion?
Only that it would be conditioned solely for their daughter, and at which time she's no longer the occupant of this, then that it would end.
Okay. So, yeah, something standard, such as the in-law apartment, shall only be occupied by individuals who are legally related to the principal residents of the premises. And then the second one, um, the rights authorized by the issuance of this special permit shall be limited to the owners, um, and shall remain in effect only during their ownership and occupancy of the premises.
That's a lot to memorize.
We could say so, subject to the conditions articulated by Ms. O'Neil.
Sure.
Can we just? Were there any waivers requested in this application?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, um, motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get a motion, can we get a motion to approve the appeal of, uh, for one seventy-eight Oak Street for the variance and the special permit?
Yes, uh, motion to approve the variance and special permit to section two and section four, table one, to construct a detached garage for an in-law apartment at one seventy-eight Oak Street in the residence B-one district, subject to the conditions laid out by Ms. O'Neil previously.
Section six.
Sorry.
Second.
Section six, table one.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, good luck. Moving on.
One oh eight.
Yeah, one, okay. Uh, the next item is to hear the appeal of Marisol Aveyan, Aveyanadneda Berry of one oh eight Prospect Street, Shrewsbury, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section six, table one, to operate a professional office or customary home occupation upon property located at one oh eight Prospect Street in the residence B-one zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate sixteen, plot one hundred and thirty thousand. Welcome, and sorry for butchering your name.
You're totally fine.
Could you say your name for the record, please?
Yes, so I am Marisol Avejaneda Berry, um, I am an occupational, or not, sorry, I am a, God, I hate speaking in public. I'm a massage therapist, and I would like to get a special permit to have a home- I'm a massage therapist and I would like to get a special permit to have a home office. Um, so I'm here to, uh, be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have about it. Um, I don't have any need for signage, uh, any excess parking, um, traffic won't be impeded in any way. Um, to my knowledge, no one has had any issues with it, as I've visited neighbors to discuss it with them. So I don't really know that should be an issue, but I'm always happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, so the, the purpose of this would be for exactly what, in your words?
So I'm a licensed massage therapist and so I'm a healthcare provider for the state of Massachusetts.
Okay.
So I would use the home office to see patients and it would, it's, would be my primary source of income. I would see one patient at a time, obviously, because I'm only one therapist.
So it's more or less a healthcare?
Yeah, I'm a licensed healthcare provider for Massachusetts.
Okay, so if, if that's the case, um, and you've applied to, you know, I'm just trying to figure out how that's a customary home occupation.
So when I had spoken to, I think, is it Patty Sheehan?
Mm-hmm.
That was what she told me I should put down for the application, so I feel like that might have been happening a lot in this meeting, so maybe that's incorrect?
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure, I just don't know how that's customary.
Why would it be uncustomary?
Um, because it's a, in, in, from what I'm seeing in the, in the zoning bylaw for uses for your, your Residence B one zone, it's not allowed.
And that would be the point of the special permit, correct?
To consider that.
Right, um, I guess, I, wh- what is the definition of a customary home office, I guess?
Good question.
So, but that wouldn't be up to me, right? Is that for you guys to discuss?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so it's not, although you're a, a medical provider, you're also providing other wellness, uh, services. Would, would that sort of also encompass, it's a little bit broader, maybe?
So, yeah, um, so basically, uh, the type of massages that I give are geared towards orthopedic wellness. And so it is very widely spaced out, um, who I see and what I see them for, but they're coming because they have an issue. And so my job is to help them identify the issue and then help make the issue better. So it's very broad preventative wellness. If that makes sense.
Where, where do you do thi- where do you do, where is this going to be in your home?
So my home is actually, uh, used to be owned by town doctors who had it spaced out, and to my knowledge, they used to see their patients in that home as well.
Okay, is that right?
And so the way the house is laid out, you walk directly into a mudroom and then there's a, a room straight across from the mudroom, about seven feet in. That room is what would be, uh, room for patients, a home office.
And y- you will oc- you occupy the, the rest of it as your resident?
The entire rest of the residence is where we live and reside in our family home. Just that room, which is, I think, supposed to be less than three hundred square feet, which it meets that requirement, would be designated to be a home office.
Okay, and how do you organize, uh, how these people come to you? I mean, how, how do you know you're gonna have one at a time and not people?
So, the way that, uh-
Do you do the scheduling yourself?
Yeah, the way that the scheduling would be laid out and the way it's traditionally laid out with mass- massage therapists is you have one increment of time where one person comes to visit and then you have a fifteen to half an hour minute buffer and then another person comes in. So there's no overlap or there's no multiple people at one time and I'm in charge of my scheduling.
What's the parking situation there?
I actually have a U driveway, um, I think you can see it on the-
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. I have a U driveway, so one person can come right in and come right out. And it's actually for like twelve cars, a driveway. It's quite large, so there's no, um, impediment to traffic.
Got you.
Is there a proposed addition as part of this?
A proposed addition?
I see the, or is that already there, that addition eight by eight?
Oh, um, that's probably before I moved in.
So that's, that's probably structured?
Yeah, I, that looks to be like a little landing pad that exists outside my house when we moved in from, so that's not it. Um, I'm just gonna get up. So, there should be another piece of paper that actually had this better laid out, but this is the entrance door right here and right here is the bedroom. That would convert into a private office. Does that make sense? So it's straight from here, this is a landing pad that's outside.
Okay.
On Google, Tim, you can see that on here.
Okay.
It's closed off here and this piece is already existing.
And just, just going back to the, the definitions in there, there's, I don't find, I can't find a definition right now of what it, what, uh, is a customary home occupation, but in the bylaw, um, under the section you're, you know, you're pointing out for the special permit, it does say, "The professional customary home occupation is conducted by a resident of the premises." That would be you, you're-
Okay.
You own the home.
I own it.
"Use is clearly incidental to and secondary to the use as a residence and not in excess of twenty-five percent of the floor area of any one floor."
Okay.
You've got that covered, right?
Yeah.
"Not more than two persons, other than residents of the premises, are regularly employed in connection with such use."
Correct.
Uh, would you be the only one?
Mm-hmm.
Nobody else? Just you?
No, you, you can't have a lot of people on top of one per- that's overwhelming.
No, I didn't know if you-
Just, just me.
Anybody, you know, a receptionist, anything like that?
No, nothing like that.
Okay. Uh, and then "Three such uses are permitted, provided that no noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, glare, unsateliness, or other nuisances produced, which is discernible from other properties."
None of that.
Uh, "There's no public display of goods or wares and no signs, except as permitted in section seven E."
Nope.
Uh, "There's no exterior storage of material equipment and no exterior evidence of non-residential use of the premises, except signs as permit, as permitted in section seven E."
Correct.
"And there's adequate off-street parking for any employee or visitors in connection with such use in accord with section seven D."
Correct.
"There's no, no scenario where anyone would be parking on the street."
Correct.
I will note, parking is allowed on the street.
It would be, even for this?
Anywhere in town. You can park on the street, as long as it's not overnight.
And I think the last house that I had, I did this as well and I got a special permit for it.
In Shrewsbury?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, um, the house that I previously lived at was Bel Vista. I can't even remember the number.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I do think that massage therapy is a customary home business. I think it fits nicely into the definition. Um, I am familiar with your very large driveway, I think there's plenty of places.
Do you live close by?
Yeah, on the, just past you. Um, but far enough away, I'm not in a butter, so.
Sure.
So I don't, I, I think that that, that this application meets the requirements for a special permit.
Thank you.
Um, is there anyone from the audience who would like to say anything? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, that was just the public hearing.
Sorry.
I propose a motion, uh, to approve the special permit, uh, to section si- section six, table one, to operate a professional office or customary home at one oh eight Prospect Street in the Residence B one district.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, congrats.
Thank you very much.
Now you can go.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Sure. Okay, moving on. We have the petition to hear the appeal for a special permit, uh, for Steve Lussier at two oh one North Quincyman Ave in the Rural B District. Uh, special permit to section four B one to demolish an existing non-conforming dwelling and rebuild a single-family dwelling that does not increase the non-conformity. I don't have the map information.
The legal notice.
I know, oh, here it is, sorry. Uh, the subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's tax, tax plate twenty-five, plot zero one one zero zero zero. Good evening, could you state your name, please?
Yeah, hi, uh, my name is Steve Lussier, I'm the general contractor that's gonna be working on the project.
Welcome.
Thanks. So, I ha- we have a non-conforming, uh, existing structure. Like you said, we wanna knock it down and, uh, erect something further back on the lot. Uh, it's gonna be about the same size as the existing house. I think the existing house is around twenty-one hundred square feet. The new house would be about twenty-two hundred square feet. Um, the existing house currently, in a layman's measure, it's about six feet off of one of the setbacks and eleven off the other. The new house will be about eleven and eleven for setbacks, so things should be a little bit, uh, further off the side setback lines. Uh, it'll facilitate getting in and off of, uh, North Quincyman. Right now, the house is pretty uptight to North Quincyman and that might get a little bit closer. I know there was a plan at one point for doing a sidewalk project, going down North Quincy. I don't know if that got tabled or if it's in the works.
Still taking its time.
Taking its time, working its way through the process. Um, so, and if I'm not mistaken, it's gonna be on that side of the road, so that would put the existing house even closer to pedestrian traffic. Um, so the proposed house is gonna be pro- I, I have a plan here. It's a hundred and something feet off the street and then there'll be a turnaround area with an enlarged driveways, people can turn around and go in and out straight as opposed to trying to back on. And I think that's probably summarizes what we're trying to do.
Right, you are a hundred and thirty-five feet for the proposed house, which is, you know, significantly farther back than the existing and neither the side yard.
It's a non-conforming lot, we wouldn't be able to build anything on it.
Right, no, I was just stating for those at home and here in the audience, the existing on the northern side is eleven five and five, and then five three for the southerly side yard setback. And you're almost maintaining that, it's eleven two, I believe.
On the right-hand side.
Yep, and then you are eleven three, so you're providing more of the-
A little bit more, some-
Of a buffer.
Of a buffer.
To that side yard.
All right, does anyone have any questions?
Steve, are you aware the, the application's for a variance, not a special permit?
It's for a special permit.
It's for a special permit, yeah.
The apple, the, what I'm looking at is check out this variance.
Tried many times.
Tried many times to address this up until Friday last week.
And to update the application.
It, there's, there's, there's been an issue with, uh, my being able to get in and make changes and the changes stick.
Okay.
But that's aware, you know, with the building department and myself-
Patty and Louise have been, uh-
...in the new online permitting system for us to request changes.
Consider it a typo, is that what, what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Sure, I'll go with that.
And it was noticed properly and it is a special permit.
Steve, are you related to Marcia?
I am.
Okay.
I have to sleep with my boss.
Who, haha, who's the primary resident?
It'll be ours.
Okay.
Who is?
This is, this will be for you.
This will be ours, yes.
Oh, you have, oh, okay.
All right, so it's for a special permit?
Kind of a conflict of interest here, isn't it?
Make changes to the pre-existing non-conforming structure, okay. Is there a sh- is that a shed that I saw that's gonna be wiped out?
There, if you, it shows as a shed, it's pretty much fallen down. Another couple months and it'll be on the ground on its own.
Okay.
And that is being removed.
Got it. All right. I don't have any further questions?
Given.
No, I don't either. Um, I'm happy to see improving setback on one side with not doing much to the existing eleven and a half feet on one side. Um, I don't know how much more you could really do with how narrow this.
It's a pretty narrow lot, narrow and deep, yeah.
Yeah, so, no, I don't have any issues with this.
I don't have any questions.
All right, um, I believe that this application does meet the criteria of a special permit. Does anyone in the audience wanna say anything? Yes, please come forward and stand at the microphone and tell us your name and your address, please.
Diane Millet, one ninety-nine. How close, um, to one ninety-nine is it gonna come?
Do you wanna answer a question?
I don't have that measurement.
Okay.
Do you want, do you know where we end up?
Um, is it gonna be halfway through it? I'm not wrong, it's gonna be between, you talk about-
How far back?
Sorry.
So how far back are you? You're the, you're right next door?
Yes.
So the house is gonna be a hundred and forty-something feet from the lake.
So which ones are?
If you could just, um, have the conversation at the microphone, just, we can, um, record appropriately. Yeah, and ask any questions through, through the, through, through me, yeah.
Can I get with this?
Sure, yes.
And your?
Thank you, sorry. Pardon the, yeah.
So, yeah, if you just, if you direct the questions to me and then I'll ask the appellant.
Oh.
What's your question?
I wanna know how close to one ninety-nine it's going to be and are there going to be any alteration in the sewer pipes that go through there?
Here's the sewer.
Sewer easement.
So our plan is not to touch that, uh, that section of piping that runs through. We're just gonna reconnect everything once the house is built.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not gonna be directing like your neighbor did.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering on the other side of-
We're not gonna be doing that, no.
Yeah.
So I can't speak for where your house is located on your lot, but from the top of the hill to the northerly corner of the house is gonna be a hundred and forty-eight feet. And I think you guys are pretty much the top of the hill, correct?
That's the platform. Martles is right here, one ninety-nine, okay.
It's gonna be a hundred feet away.
Okay, and then it won't touch the, um, sewer easement.
No.
No.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering, because, um, on the other side, I, I don't know Anthony's last name, the, the mansion, um, they actually moved the whole sewer line and, um-
No, they're not, kinda.
Yeah, okay, okay.
You all set?
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions?
Thanks so much.
You got it, you bet.
Okay, thank you for your input. Anyone else?
No, just on you.
So could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And can we get a motion to approve the appeal?
Motion to approve the special permit, uh, to section four B, parentheses one, to demolish an existing non-conforming dwelling and rebuild a single-family dwelling that does not increase the non-conformity at two oh one North Quincyman Ave in the Rural B District.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion is granted, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Thank you too. Uh, do you wanna, but then you go, oh, you, did you sign everything? Well, just circle back afterward, done.
Yes.
Oh, but wait a minute.
Exactly my point. I was, I wasn't gonna bring it up until I stood at the chair, but I guess I will.
Which is fine, too.
Do that now.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the next matter is to hear the appeal of Kevin, Kevin Nisbet of eleven Juddix Street, Shrewsbury, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section four B one, to construction addition two and eight tenths feet from the side yard where ten feet upon property located, where ten feet is required upon property located at eleven Juddix Street in Residence B one zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's tax plate, eleven, plot two five six zero zero zero. Good evening, can you state your name, please?
Kevin Nisbet, eleven Juddix Street, this is my wife, Jennifer.
Jen Nisbet.
Welcome.
Juddix Street.
So, obviously, three peers in board, um, I don't think we've ever had this situation come up since I've been a member. Is that something we can move forward with?
It's not a quorum.
Can we?
I don't think we have a quorum.
Oh, who do you call her, Lee?
Right, for three people?
Well.
I've not been around, Mr. Byrne, have you ever encountered a situation like this?
Well, there, there's, there's, there's three of us, it's a special permit?
It's a special, special permit, yeah.
Yeah, special permit. Yeah, special permit.
Three votes would do it, I suppose. Well, I don't know.
Yeah.
Call Peter, get him here.
Uh, we understand that if we don't go forward today, that there are consequences for your, your construction schedule, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
And what we're faced with is if we voted inappropriately.
Right.
And that were challenged, that likely would be overturned. It's a seven-member board, how many are we? Seven? We're a five-member board, and we have three associates, right? It's the definition of quorum.
According to the zoning board regulations, four board members, regular associates, shall be present at all public hearings.
Thank you very much, that settles it.
I think that answers that question.
Very sorry, Mr. Nisbet.
So.
Sorry, Kevin.
I know we do have a special meeting for the twenty-ninth. Is it possible to push to that one? Or is that specific to, um, Green, Green Street?
Well, we already have two prior, uh, along with that one, so.
Yeah.
I think it's up, is that-
Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do the notice legally and all that.
It's already noticed.
Okay.
Here we are, opened it. We can request to continue to July seventeenth.
Okay.
So we won't have to notice it again.
All right, is that acceptable to both of you?
Yep, I would certainly request the continuance.
Okay, can I get a motion to continue this matter to July seventeenth?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Even though we're not.
Well, we still have any, right? Well, I, I, I think we do.
I think it's just procedurally.
We don't have an option, right?
At the next hearing.
You can't just hang out there, so, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's probably the best, uh, legal thing we can do.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, apologies. Okay, so I have to make sure we've signed everything.
Oh, yeah, let Kevin come back and we can-
Yep. And I accidentally signed under member instead of, because I'm not the chair. Does it matter who's who?
That's funny, Kef, you just did, now you're.
Right.
We just cross out one, or most of them. I'll just cross it out. Am I the chair? I mean, okay, I'm just gonna cross it out and write chair next to my name. Does that work? Okay. See how my pen's gonna do. Wow, is, is it a full move? Oh, sorry, uh, should we close this, yeah?
Yeah, so we've done the new business, so we just need to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn, adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.